Okay, if I could ask folks to settle down, we're going to get started. Good evening, thank you for coming out. The hour of 6:30 PM having arrived, I will call to order this regular meeting of the planning board. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel. The video is also streamed on the city's website and is posted on the website by the end of the next business day barring any technical difficulties. Copies of the printed agenda are available in the wall pockets as you entered the meeting room. The public and other board members will be recognized to ask questions and comment on the agenda item under discussion. After being recognized, all remarks are to be made through the chair. I will not recognize an individual a second time until everyone who wishes to speak has a chance. Anyone who wishes to address the committee is asked to go to one of the microphones in the room up here and identify themselves by name and address prior to speaking. Our minute taker tonight is participating remotely. Board members, please be sure to turn on your microphone when speaking. If the minute taker is unable to hear, they will ask you to speak louder or turn your microphone on. We're all familiar with that admonishment. I will now call to order this regular meeting of the planning board and declare a quorum present. Okay. First order of business is our, is our roll call. Will staff please conduct the roll?
Harold Farrington.
Here.
Roberta Mastojavani. Mayor Jay Khan.
Here.
Counselor Mike Remy.
Here.
Sarah Vazani.
Here.
Ryan Clancy.
Here.
Kenneth Cost.
Here.
Armando Ranjel.
Here.
And for the alternate, Stefan Mayu, Brandon Markalon, Tammy Adams, and Michael Hafer.
Here.
And Mr. Chair, you do have a couple of openings that Mr. Hafer.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that we have at least one opening, I would ask Mr. Hafer to participate as a full voting member for tonight's meeting. Great, so noted. All right. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the June 23, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2025 meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Khan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Remy. Okay. With that being said, are there any questions or comments with respect to the minutes? I would have one slight, slight change to lines 40, 140 and 141. Which will read something like, they did have their, had their quarterly meeting, and he participated, meaning me. So it was still kind of written as if the meeting hadn't happened. So, you guys can figure out the exact wording, but the Southwest Planning Meeting Roundtable happened before our planning board meeting. Okay. With that being said, I'll call the vote. Yes, Counselor Remy?
I think it was actually three days before the roundtable, based on the dates that are in here. The meeting was on the 23rd, as listed as the meeting began on the 26th for the roundtable.
Just double check.
I think you're talking about their, their annual meeting, June 2nd or something like that.
Because I remember that, you were inviting us to go to their roundtable, I think.
Okay, all right, let's just leave it as it is. That's fine. Okay, so let's call the vote. All those in favor of the minutes? Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we, next we have a standing agenda item. As a matter of practice, the board will issue a final vote on all conditionally approved plans after all the conditions precedent have been met. This final vote will be the final approval and will start the 30-day appeal clock. Are there any applications tonight that are ready for a final vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mary Brenner, Senior Planner. There's one application tonight that's ready for a final vote. This is a boundary line adjustment, Project PB-2025-10 for 37 and 38 Grimes Road. There were four conditions precedent, including the owner's signature appear on the proposed plan, the submittal of four full-size paper copies and a digital copy of the final plans, submittal of a check to cover the cost of recording, and an inspection of the lot monuments by the Public Works Director or their designee, and all of those conditions have been met.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. I will entertain a motion for final approval. Do you have those? Who's got? Do you have a copy of these?
Move to issue final approval on PB 2025-10.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Khan. Any discussion?
I'm just, could staff just remind me, where is Grimes Road?
Up near Stonewall.
Trying to remember this, this application.
Up near Stonewall, tucked behind Stonewall Farm there.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Brenner, please.
So, I believe Grimes Road, well, it's technically a road, really only has, I think, two houses, maybe three on it, so it kind of, two houses, so it almost functions like a really long private driveway, but it's actually a public road. But it's probably not a road that most people would be familiar with unless they had to visit one of those homes.
Somebody was making improvements on property and needed a boundary line adjustment? I just don't remember the application. It's okay. Doesn't, it doesn't sound like this one was that complicated.
No, it was a pretty straightforward application, and I believe it was settling an estate that was the boundary line adjustment, so.
Okay, that might sound familiar. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's move to the vote. All those in favor of final approval on, which number was this? 2025-10? Please indicate. Any opposed? Okay. PB 2025-10 is, has received final approval. Thank you. Next on the agenda are extension requests. We have two items up for extension request. The first is PB 2025-03, major site plan Douglas Company, Inc., Zero Black Brook Road. Owner Douglas Company, Inc. requests a first extension to the deadline to satisfy the precedent conditions of approval for the proposed construction of an approximately 98,323 square foot office and warehouse building on two parcels at Zero Black Brook Road. TMP numbers 221-023-000 and 221-024-000. The parcels are a combined approximately 5.33 acres in size and are located in the Corporate Park District. Okay, at this time, I would, oh, there he is. I would invite the representative for the applicant to, to address us. Thank you.
Good evening, John Noonan with Fieldstone Land Consultants here on behalf of Douglas Company. So, our client is looking to, for a time extension on the conditional approval. We have everything pretty much ready for meeting our conditions. However, timing based on the operations for tariffs on their product have impacted, and they're kind of waiting to determine how much more it's going to impact their business. So, they're looking for an extension on, on the approval before moving forward on a new building because of the, the impacts of tariffs, because the majority of the product is coming from overseas.
Yeah, understood. Board members have questions for Mr. Noonan? I think we're kind of limited to a six-month extension, but hopefully, hopefully things will be, things do move fast in the tariff world. Hopefully, things will be squared away for, for Scott and his company. But, so I guess I'll entertain a motion at this time.
And do we normally take public comment on extension requests?
We get the motion first, then, if you have a question for Mr. Noonan. Okay.
Move to grant a six-month extension to satisfy the conditions of approval for PB 2025-03.
Second, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, now, board discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I too have been in touch with Scott Clark, the president of Douglas Toys. I think this is a really unfortunate situation that he faces, impacting his business, employees in Keene, and an improvement that is long overdue. This has been shared with congressional delegation as well as the governor's office. I know all of those elected officers, officials, are very concerned about this and the impact that tariffs are having on freezing business expansion and opportunities that, it's an unfortunate situation. And I hope that it is resolved, as the chairman has said, in the next window of opportunity. And I really appreciate Mr. Clark and his patience, but this is a very important business in the city of Keene and has a major economic impact for our city and its employees. So I do hope that our elected officials are successful and we can move on this and Mr. Clark can bring it back to us expeditiously. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Amen. All right, thank you, Mr. Noonan. So we will move to a vote on this. So all those in favor of the extension? Any opposed? Okay, extension request is granted. Our second extension request is for PB-2024-23. Actually, I am going to recuse myself at this time and turn it over to...
Any concerns from the board on the chair recusing himself?
No.
All right. I'm going to try to run it from here unless you guys really care about me moving up there for about a minute and a half. So I was going to kick it to, do I need to move up there?
I, I think you might need to elect a chair pro tem since the vice chair isn't here, if you wouldn't mind just doing a quick vote. Is there a nomination for someone to serve as chair pro tem?
Armando can do it.
Can nominate Counselor Remy.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
All right, thanks. Sorry for the confusion. I was just going to do it because I think it'll be, hopefully, a relatively quick one, but I was going to kick it over to the applicant to give any explanation on here. I guess there's probably language I'm supposed to read on this to kick it off, but this is a six-month extension request for PB 2024-23, a major state plan review and water surface CUP for the Cheshire County Shooting Sports Education Foundation, Inc., located at 19 Ferrybrook Road in Keene. Is there anything else I need to add to that, or is that good enough to open it? All right, with that, I'd kick it over to the applicant.
I'm Liza Sargent, SBE Associates, representing the Cheshire County Shooting Sports Education Foundation. The conditions precedent, we've met three out of the five, and we're looking for a time extension, particularly financial, so we can pay for the expense of landscape security. Short and sweet, that's how much I can add to that.
Other than we couldn't really replicate the wetlands in the winter, so we're trying to do it when it's warm.
Fair enough. Any questions from the board for the applicant? Okay. I'm allowed to make a motion, right? Just to make it easy. I would move to grant a six-month extension to satisfy the conditions of approval for PB 2024-23. Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Vazani, any board discussion? Okay, with that, take a vote. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Chair.
I know. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Remy. Okay, at this point, we're going to switch up the agenda just a tiny bit, and we are going to address item number six, which is a correspondence and board discussion, alleged violation of the earth excavation regulations. Mr. James Manley of 67 Tyler Lane in Sullivan has submitted a complaint related to the visibility of the gravel pit located at 21 and 57 Route 9, TMP numbers 215-007-000 and 215-008-000 from the adjacent state highway. At this time, the board will consider whether further investigation of the alleged violation is warranted and whether to delegate enforcement to code enforcement staff. So, at this time, I would like to ask staff to provide us with their assessment of this, of this item.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the planning board is the regulating body for earth excavation regulations as stated in state statute and our local ordinance, specifically in Article 25 of the Land Development Code. And so, this item, we received this complaint in May, and it's for a number, I think there's five separate sections of the earth excavation regulations that are cited in the complaint. And the planning board, again, is the enforcement authority. Staff is recommending that you delegate your authority of enforcement to code enforcement staff because you have an ongoing and active application before you for an expansion of the same gravel pit. And then, the reasoning for that is just to keep the two items separate and reduce any potential conflicts of interest. Alternatively, you could choose to adjudicate the complaint yourself, in which case, you would need to make a decision as to whether or not you want to continue looking into this, and if so, you would need to set a public hearing for the next meeting date to have a conversation about the, the complaint and whether or not there's a violation, and if so, what the remedy would be. So, those are, those are your options. Staff, again, is recommending that you delegate your authority as allowed under state statute.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Okay. So, at this time, I will ask for a motion, unless you have a, if there are questions or comments for staff.
I'll offer a comment, and then I just, I'll offer a motion at the end and people can respond to it, if that works. But, it generally makes sense to me. I think this board isn't set up to do enforcement, and we're lucky enough as a city that we do have a full-time staffed code enforcement, which a lot of places in the, don't have across the state. So, it makes sense to me where the staff recommendation is on delegating this to code enforcement, especially, you know, these can be really complex issues and having people that are professionals doing it makes sense to me. With that, I would offer a motion, and folks can tune me up if they don't like it, to move to authorize code enforcement staff to enforce, enforce the earth excavation regulations in Article 25 of the Land Development Code, including the current complaint and all future complaints in this, in those chapters.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Vazani. Discussion, questions? Mr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To me, it makes sense to have staff handle this because they'll be much more thorough in their investigation. If, if the board... If the board does choose to go this route, if city staff could just mention for the minutes and to anyone watching at home or the audience how we as a board and the public can follow along in this follow-up, in the city's follow-up into this issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I...
Other comments? Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Brenner.
Just to follow up on Mr. Clancy's comments, for anyone following along in the public, if you want to check up on the status of the complaint and the investigation into it, we have an online portal that should be publicly accessible and you can also call or reach out to the Community Development Department for a status update. So there's a few options there.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion delegating the responsibility for enforcement for earth excavation complaints indicate? Any opposed? Okay. So moved. Thank you. Okay, now we move into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is SPR-440, modification one. Major site plan, veterinary hospital addition, 686 Court Street. Applicant, HDA Architects, Inc., on behalf of owner Court Street Veterinary Hospital, proposes to construct an approximately 2,092 square foot addition and renovate the existing veterinary hospital located at 686 Court Street. That is TMP number 228-008-000. The parcel is 4.2 acres in size and is located in the high-density district. I ask staff if you have a recommendation for completeness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evan Clements, planner. The applicant has requested exemptions from submitting a grading plan, landscaping plan, lighting plan, and all technical reports. After reviewing each request, planning staff has made the preliminary determination that granting the requested exemptions would have no bearings on the merits of this application and recommend that the board accept the application as complete.
Thank you, Mr. Clement. I'll entertain a motion for completeness.
Still moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions regarding completeness of the application? Okay, let's call. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just agree with the staff relative to waiving these three requirements. This is a site that I happen to drive past a couple of times, or a half dozen times a day. And the grading, lighting, and landscaping are fixed, in place. And I can totally understand that the request for the waiver is not going to affect this application.
Mr. Cost, was that a hand or you were just... Okay. All right. Okay, let's vote on the completeness motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion is deemed complete. So at this time, I would invite the applicant to provide their names and address us. Thank you.
My name is Peter Hill. I'm the architect with HDA Architects and we're in Rome, Georgia.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Okay. My name is Peter Hill. I'm the architect with HDA Architects and we're in Rome, Georgia. And I'm here with Tim...
Tim Russell.
Who's one of the owners. And just a brief history, we've got a building that was, like many buildings of this size in this era, has been added on to many, many times. So we have the blessing of lots of materials to choose from. And the elegance of concrete block has faded in recent years, so we went with siding. So we're consolidating the image and the exterior sort of vernacular of the building. And it's going to have a craftsman style to it. We're adding a new entrance and really enhancing the overall exterior appearance of the building, but also the inner workings of the building. We're modernizing the hospital, bringing it into a state-of-the-art facility that's going to offer physical therapy and other therapies that just aren't available right now in this area. So it's a project we're excited about.
Great. Board members have questions for the applicant? Mayor Khan?
Thank you. Two questions for you. One of the concerns that many pet owners have in our community is relative to emergency services after hours, sort of services. And I'm curious if this expansion is going to provide any additional services along those lines.
So unfortunately, we don't offer emergency after care after we're closed. No other facility in this area does either. We do have a working program with a telemed company that could telemed with someone if they didn't want to go to emergency, but we have no plans on offering after-hours emergency care with this addition.
And that telemedicine arrangement could be made through your offices?
Yep. So it's called Vet Triage. On our website, we have a link to it. I believe all the other clinics in our area use it as well. We do have, if you call our voicemail after hours, we have a direct link on that to it. But it's a very good service that they do talk to a veterinarian live on Zoom, basically. They would triage over that call and then if they need to go to an emergency facility, they would select that one for them.
Thank you. It's a little off-topic, but thanks for the answer. The other question, Mr. Chairman, is...
Yeah, please do.
Is related to any traffic impacts. I, is, do you have a sense that there's a volume increase in client use of the services at the site? Or is that fairly neutral?
It's going to be neutral. There is an expansion of the medical facilities that are going to be available and services, but there was a grooming business in this building that is being taken out. And grooming as a service has a lot more retail traffic than the medical procedures of a typical vet hospital. So by removing the grooming service altogether and replacing it with exam rooms and physical therapy equipment, we feel like it's going to be very close to neutral.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll invite staff to provide their comments.
Good evening. Evan Clements, planner. Do some brief background and then we'll get through it. So the subject parcel is an existing 4.2-acre lot located on the western side of Court Street, approximately a half a mile from the Cheshire Medical Center roundabout. The property abuts the Ash Willet River to the rear and contains an existing 7,106 square foot, one-story building that serves as the location of the Court Street Veterinary Hospital. Associated site improvements include two street access points with driveways and a parking lot that wraps around the existing building that provides a total of 33 parking spaces. The existing non-conforming use of the property is a veterinary hospital, which is considered an animal care facility under Article 8, Section 832B of the Land Development Code. The use is considered non-conforming as an animal care facility, which is not normally allowed in the high-density district. In 1984, the property received approval from the zoning board of adjustment for a change in non-conforming use from a tree service business to the veterinary hospital. In '89, the property received approval from the zoning board for an enlargement of the non-conforming use to build an addition. In 2020, the property again received an approval from the zoning board for another enlargement of non-conforming use. And then one more time, just because, in 2025, the property received approval from the zoning board for a third enlargement of a non-conforming use, which is why we're here this evening. The purpose of this application is to seek approval for the 2,100 square foot addition. No additional changes to the site are proposed besides the construction of the addition and the project meets the threshold for major site plan review because this addition is greater than 15% of the gross floor area of the existing principal building. So in regards to drainage, sediment, and erosion control, snow storage, landscaping, screening, lighting, sewer and water, filling and excavation, surface water and wetlands, hazardous and toxic materials, and noises, the proposed changes to the site are minimal. Those standards are either not applicable or they meet our requirements as needed. The traffic and access management, as the applicant referred to, with the removal of the pet grooming facility, the net change in trips is minimal. The site is well-designed to handle vehicular and pedestrian traffic through the site itself and that standard does appear to be met. The architectural and visual appearance is what is the focus of this application this evening. So the applicant has stated in their narrative that the proposed addition was designed to preserve the harmonious character of the existing building. A gable entry that is supported by tapered columns and large windows are incorporated to promote visual interest on the street-facing facade. The applicant also notes that the design reduces the massive aesthetic effects and harmoni... and harmo... oof. And is harmonious with the city's distinctive architectural identity, unique character, and prevailing scale. Proposed materials include vinyl siding, fiber cement trim, and decorative wood trusses. The proposed color palette is a muted gray and cream. So I did pull out some applicable standards from the architectural and visual appearance. So 2114-2, visual interest. Front facades and exterior walls shall be articulated to express an architectural identity to avoid a uniform appearance. And architectural details shall give the impression of being integral to and compatible with the overall design. Architectural features shall conform to accepted principles of architectural design and construction. Exterior materials, textures, and colors shall minimize visual aggressiveness and shall harm... Again, that word that I can't seem to say this evening. Be harmonious with the city's distinctive architectural identity and unique character. Surfaces with glossy finishes, reflective glass, or dark-tinted exteriors, or untreated aluminum, stainless steel, or metal exterior finishes shall be discouraged. Modifications and additions to existing structures shall be harmonious with the character of the existing structure and last... And yes. So generally, staff doesn't really weigh in on this and I do encourage the board to discuss the proposed architectural changes and the addition to see if those standards are met. And then lastly, staff is recommending final approval on this application this evening, considering the level nature of the lot, the minimal amount of earthwork that will be required to do the addition. No additional landscaping, no work in the public right of way or anything like that. There's no normal securities that need to be posted and things like that. The only outstanding item was final plan sets signed by the property owner, which staff did receive this evening. So barring any changes necessitated from the planning board, staff believes this application is ready for final approval and the suggested motion reflects that. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Clement? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so let's, I'll entertain a... Oh, okay. Good question. All right, so is, may I see a show of hands? Is there anyone in the audience who is here to comment on this? Okay. Just one? All right. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Paula Sousa. I'm the director at Sophia's Hearth, which is the adjacent neighbor to the north, 700 Court Street. And we, I'm here to support our neighbor and we give our full approval for the renovation and the addition and wish them well.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else for this item? All right. I will, at this point, close the public portion and move to entertaining a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve SPR-440, modification one, as shown on the plan set identified as Court Street Vet Hospital, prepared by HAD Architects, Inc., at varying scales, dated June 20, 2025, and last revised July 10, 2025, with no conditions. And just generally to state, there's no, I don't see any reason for regional impact or anything. I think it's a simple project, as stated.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fazani. I agree with Counselor Remy. There is no regional impact for this project. I would direct you to page 19 in your agenda packet, which has the elevations, which are really the, kind of the only thing that we're looking at on this project. And I, for one, feel it's very attractive. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Fazani.
I agree that it is visually appealing to that area especially. So it does, it's a nice job designing it so that it fits in and meets the the overall average look of that area and kind of elevates it. And so I'm excited to see that come to fruition.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All right, let's proceed to the vote. So we have a motion and a second for final approval. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so this is... SPR-4040, modification one, is, receives final approval. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Give them a chance just to step out. Our next item on the agenda is PB-2025-14, Surface Water Protection Conditional Use Permit, Eversource T198 Transmission Line. Applicant, Normando Associates, Inc., on behalf of owner Public Service Company of New Hampshire, doing business as Eversource Energy, proposes to replace 12 structures along T198 Transmission Line. The proposed work area begins north of New Hampshire Route 101 and continues south to the Swansea Town border. This project will temporarily impact approximately 102,332 square feet of the surface water protection buffer for temporary access and workpad placement. Okay. I ask staff if you have a recommendation for completion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Megan Fortson, planner. The applicant has requested exemptions from submitting a grading plan, landscaping plan, lighting plan, and all technical reports. After reviewing each request, staff have made the preliminary determination that granting the requested waivers would have no bearing on the merits of the application and recommends that the board accept the application as complete.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for completeness.
Move to find the application complete.
Thank you, Counselor Remy. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fazani. Any questions or discussion regarding completeness of the application? Okay. So let's call the vote. All those in favor of completeness? Any opposed? Okay. Application is deemed to be complete. So at this time, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Oliver from Normando Associates.
Jeremy Fennell, licensing and permitting for Eversource Energy.
So we are here on behalf of the T198 Structure Line Maintenance Project. As summarized before, we... As summarized before, we would like to replace 12 existing utility structures which have reached the end of their expected lifespan. Impacts are related to removal of the pole butts that, for the existing structures and replacement of those poles with weathered steel metal structures. All other impacts will consist of temporary timber matting to allow access and also construction of workpads necessary to complete the structure replacements. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant? Councilor Remi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going through, I was, I hadn't caught that there was a difference in what the types were going to be. You just mentioned that it was going to move to being a weathered steel. Is it going to be visually different than what we're seeing out there today?
So, what's out there currently are wooden poles.
Yep.
What, and they're H-frames. What will be replaced is, it'll be weathered steel but still H-frames. So, it will have some visual difference but not significant.
Yeah, the, I'll just jump in here. The, so, the wooden poles, they're kind of like a grayish wood at this point because they've been there, you know, basically since the 60s. And the new weathered steel, they're kind of made to look, they're brownish and then they get a little bit lighter brown over time. So, it's not that kind of new metal. So, yeah, it blends in pretty well.
I see the visuals on it now. I honestly couldn't tell those weren't steel from, like, to your point, the weathering on the wood. So, I thought we were already looking at weathered steel there, that's why. So, appreciate that comment. Thank you.
I have a, I have, sorry. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cost.
Let me, quick question.
That's fine, take your time.
Using the metal, I always think of that as that kind of rusting steel, that naturally just rusts, only to a point, not rusting through. But since they're steel, is this adding to the resiliency of the system so that, you know, it might be a little bit more resilient to weather and things like that by putting in these new poles?
Yeah, so, we're thinking that the poles will have lifespan of at least 50 years and they'll be less susceptible to insects and things like that. I mean, you know, the current poles, they've served very well. They're made out of good trees, but over time, the insects get in into them and things like woodpeckers start going at them. So, these will be less, a lot more resistant to that.
Councilor Remi?
Just one last one here, and I, this is more my city councilor hat, so it's not really, if you can't answer it, that's okay. But should we expect any interruption of, like, services during that time when it's under construction or is this invisible to the consumer, this work happening?
Right, we're not anticipating any outages as far as interruption to service with this project.
Perfect. I figured that was the answer, but.
It's good to ask.
Yeah.
My question is, what number poles? I know you said in your narrative that it extends to the Swansea border, but I don't know if, I was just trying to count, you know, 12 poles, and it looked like 133 and 132 actually are in Swansea. I don't know if those are part or I'm just missing the, which poles are being replaced at this time.
Yeah, so, so, we're not replacing all the poles. We're basically starting at Structure 145, which is on the, it looks like the north side of Route 101, and then we're ending at 134. Structure 133 is actually in Swansea.
Right, it straddles it, yeah.
And the, the project as a whole keeps going from there, but that's the section in Keen.
Okay, no, that's fine. I was just, because we do have this regional impact that we have to keep track of, and I wasn't really sure which numbers were going, being replaced. Okay, thank you. That's good. My only other questions are, just in terms of impacts to what's going on there, you know, Keene State College athletic fields, you anticipate any disruption in access to that or to the rail trail, which runs right there, too?
Yeah, so, we will be using Criff Road, and we are working with Keene State, because we understand that that's a very popular area for the stadium, the cross-country fields back there. So, we are, are working with them to minimize the disruption as much as possible. I will say, this project has quite a few time of year restrictions for wildlife, so we're trying to, you know, we can't be at the point where we have no time to work on our project. So, those are, a lot of those time of year restrictions are kind of pushing us into the fall and winter. But again, we're working with Keene State as much as possible to minimize their disruption. And we do have the right-of-way, so, we're not really anticipating, we'll be traveling on Criff Road, but we aren't anticipating really occupying Criff Road for our work. It'll all be in the grassed-in right-of-way area.
And no impact to the rail trail?
No, no, we'll just be crossing it at the existing Criff Road.
Right, okay, yeah, fine. Councilor Remi?
Thank you. I lied about being my last one. I had one more. So, you have a ton of good information in the packet around what you're going to do to mitigate impact to the wetland areas when you're operating there. Just for the record, like, when you're done, those all get removed and it gets put back to as-was condition, prior conditions as best you can?
Yes, that is what is proposed.
Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up to the wetland, so, it's not a big area, but it does say there'll be 140 square feet of permanent wetland impacts and 300 square feet of 75-foot wetland buffer, which won't be mitigated or?
So, those are associated with placement of the poles. We assume a certain square footage of permanent disturbance for each pole footing and each structure has two pole footings.
Okay, thank you.
I commend that you're in contact with Keene State and working with them to mitigate and understand any impacts. I would encourage you to do the same with the rail trail folks, just so, just good public relations. Okay, any other questions? Mayor Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. So, a couple of questions on pole placements and what happens when the poles are, and the wires are crossing 101 or Criff Road? I see the path that you've defined in the drawings from Pole 145 to 130, but there are breaks in your dashed lines. Anyway, can you explain what happens to the wires? Are they crossing the roads?
Yeah, the, the wires are, will have existing crossings of the wires, and we're doing the structure work on both sides of the road. So, we're not really anticipating there being any kind of disruption to those roads while we're doing the structure work. We may need some kind of, especially at 101, we may end up getting a police detail when we're actually transferring the wires just out of precaution, but we're not actually anticipating, you know, you know, replacing wires or anything like that over those roads. Was that, was that your question?
I'm just wanting to read the drawings accurately.
Okay.
Because there is this break of not seeing the lines of definition as you cross those two roadways.
You're referring to the yellow dashed line?
Yes.
That, that is not actually representative of the wires.
Okay.
That is representative of the center line of the access route that the construction teams will follow for building the access roads. So, that has nothing to do with the wires. We don't actually display on these plans the appearance of the wires because they're overhead and, as Jeremy says, they're, they're not going to come down or impact road closures or anything like that.
So, let me try to reinterpret what you're presenting. All the wires that are going to be transmitting along this pathway, they already are in place.
Yes.
It's just a matter of what is the device that is carrying those wires, right?
Yes. It will be a transfer over. The metal poles typically get installed first and then they transfer over the wires and take down the wooden ones.
So, really, very minimal disruption to services?
No disruption of services is anticipated.
Yep. And, and no additional capacity on these poles?
No.
Okay, I guess that helps. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, Ms. Oliver and Mr. Fennell. This time, I will invite staff to provide comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Megan Fortson, planner. I'll try to keep this relatively brief, but as was mentioned by the applicants, the T-198 Transmission Line crosses through portions of Keene, Swansea, Marlborough and Troy for about 11 miles, and it has a right-of-way width of 150 feet. Within the city of Keene, the proposed project area is going to cross through several different zoning districts, including the high-density commerce, industrial and agricultural districts. And all of these districts require different buffer widths from the surface waters and wetlands, and those range from 30 feet at the shortest amount of buffer that's required up to 75 feet. Again, it's a one-for-one replacement of 12 existing utility structures, and there are temporary impacts proposed of around 56,000 square feet to wetlands and about 102,000 square feet to the surface water buffer area. And then, permanent impacts are going to be about 140 square feet in the wetlands and 300 square feet in the surface water buffer, again, due to the installation of the replacement structures. So, this application really hits the threshold for requiring the submittal of a conditional use permit under two different sections of Article 11, which are your surface water protection overlay district standards. One of them is for the construction of the temporary access roads that they'll use to actually access the work areas, and the other is for the removal and replacement of a new structure within the surface water buffer. I just do want to make it clear that with any, with any impacts to the actual wetlands, that is reviewed by the state through a wetlands permit. You, as the planning board, have purview over the surface water buffer of either 30 feet or 75 feet, and for consistency's sake, the applicant has provided a blanket 75-foot buffer through the entire work area. In terms of regional impact, although the project is going to span municipal boundaries, this is a relatively sort of ordinary maintenance and repair project, so staff didn't feel that it had the potential for regional impact. The only departmental comments of note that we received on the application were the fact that, under the state of New Hampshire's regulations, public, public utility transmission lines and associated structures are exempt from the local building permit process. However, portions of the structure are located within the floodplain, so that will require the submittal of a floodplain development permit. So, we've included that as a recommended condition of approval for the application. As I mentioned, all of the, almost all of the applicable standards are outlined under Section 11 of the Land Development Code. I'm going to try to run through those quickly because, obviously, they're related to trying to minimize the impacts of work within the surface water buffer and also where there are impacts, do what they can do to restore the area afterwards. So, the first standard states that the proposed use and/or activity cannot be located in a manner to avoid encroachment into the surface water protection overlay district. Again, this is an existing transmission line where work is being done, so due to the site constraints and the existing structure locations, it'd be quite an ask of the applicant to ask them to relocate the entire utility line. The second standard states that encroachment into the buffer area has been minimized to the maximum extent possible. So, again, I had outlined in my staff report the proposed areas of impacts, and the applicant had stated in the narrative that because the proposed project area is located within an existing right-of-way and current utilities are at their, and the end of their life expectancy, there are inherent limitations in terms of the changes that can be made. So, the applicant will be using timber matting to establish temporary workpads and access routes to minimize impacts to the wetlands and upland structures, and access routes will be created to follow existing upland walking trails and structures will be shifted out of or further away from the wetlands when possible. And then, the third standard relates to, basically, when you take in, into consideration all of the different aspects of the surface water buffer, the applicant is working to minimize those impacts. So, again, the applicant has provided several examples of where they're trying to create wetland crossings in areas where there are already walking trails, move structures out of the surface water buffer. They're going to be using the timber matting, again, to minimize disturbance to wetlands areas, and then areas will be reclaimed with an appropriate native seed mix. The applicants did attend the Conservation Commission meeting that was scheduled for last Monday, and the feedback provided by the Conservation Commission was that they recommend that a pollinator-friendly seed mix be used and that any material brought onto the site be checked for invasive species. So, that was their recommendation. Yep, and it's pretty much skipping through the last few standards. It's all really related to remediation and minimizing the impacts to the buffer. One thing I'll quickly go through is your last standard, basically goes to say that the planning board can use certain items to determine whether or not the proposed encroachment will result in adverse impacts on the surface water resource. And so, in that section of their narrative, the applicant provided an interesting breakdown of the wetlands that run through this area. So, generally, they said that the wetlands consist of scrub shrub, emergent and wet meadow wetlands. The wetlands north of Criff Road are hydrologically separate from the Ashwhewlet River due to the surrounding development, and then, once you get south of Criff Road, the wetlands are part of the complex of floodplain wetlands contiguous to the Ashwhewlet River, which makes them a little bit more valuable hydrogeologically than the wetlands to the north. So, without kind of going over the same things again and again, the recommended motion that I included in the staff report is for final approval. We do have final plan sets that have been signed by the property owner, and this type of application is not something that we would typically require the submittal of a security for, just due to the size of the area that's going to be affected as part of this work. So, I've added a few conditions related to the submittal of various permits that would be applicable, both from the state and local, and then a few federal permits. And then, the other item is that the applicant is working on preparing a stormwater pollution prevention plan, so I added a condition related to the submittal of that plan for review and comment by the city engineer. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fortson. Questions for Ms. Fortson? Mr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because of so much involvement from other departments, when it's all said and done, does the city go and assess the work and make sure that things are planted, or is that state?
So, in terms of making sure that everything was remediated properly, it would really be on the city to go out and do it, I would say. I'm not really sure what the, to be honest, what the state will require for remediation as part of, like, the wetlands permit or anything like that. But, yeah, typically, we would, we would be going out to the site, or not even to the site, but to the trail area.
Other questions? Okay. Okay, thank you. So again, I'll ask for a show of hands. Is anyone in the audience here to speak on this topic? Raise your hand if you are. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion and move on to board deliberation. So at this time, I'd like to start by requesting a motion for final approval.
All right. So I move to issue final approval for PB 2025-14 as shown on the plans identified as T-198 maintenance project, prepared by Normandow Associates Environmental Consultants at varying scales on June 17, 2025, with the following conditions. One, prior to the commencement of work, the following conditions shall be met. A, the submittal of approved permit numbers to all necessary local, state, and federal permit applications, including but not limited to: One, an approved floodplain development permit from the City of Keene Community Development Department. Two, temporary street access permits for each access point from the public right-of-way from the City of Keene Public Works Department. Three, approved wetlands alteration of terrain and shorelands permits from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Four, an approved general permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and a general construction permit from the U.S. EPA. Five, any other local, state, or federal permits deemed applicable to the purpose or proposed scope of work by the appropriate decision-making authority. And B, the submittal of a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the Community Development Department for review and comment by the city engineer.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Fazani. All right. Questions, comments? Counselor Remi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the recommended conditions that the staff gave out. So I don't want to just read them and not have commented on what they were. I do agree with the recommended conditions. It makes sense. And I agree with the concept of this is more routine maintenance. While it does go close to the Swansea line, it doesn't affect, the last pole is outside of the water protection buffer of Swansea. And that would be the only place where I was like getting close. And like if we were right in Swansea wetlands, then the last pole, then it gets a little gray, but we're outside of that. So I think it makes sense that there's no regional impact, so.
Would, sorry, Mayor, would someone like to comment regarding the Conservation Commission's recommendations and whether that should be included as a condition? Mr. Clancy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems like a pretty standard recommendation on their part. But I think that the applicant does this around the state and is pretty familiar with what to plant and what not to plant. So I think I'm comfortable with their proposal and not including the conservation's recommendations.
Mr. Cost?
Yeah, I think Mr. Clancy is probably, is correct that this is normal operating procedure. But it would seem like, just to add that statement about the pollinator plants or the exact wording would be useful. There was another statement I heard about invasive species, not to bring anything into the site. So I don't know if that's not just plants, but could also be materials and wood and timbers and things like that, to make sure they're not carrying any, you know, any kind of disease-carrying insects or such. I would expect they're not. I'm sure the timbers are finished. But so just to be safe, it would seem reasonable to include.
Well, I understand they're steel, not.
Well, but the matting and the other materials and the shoring up, and there's a lot of other stuff going on.
The matting is wood, yep.
Yeah. So if we can add that. I don't have the exact wording from the conservation.
Counselor Remi?
I can take a swing at it if you want to try.
Yeah, obviously, I would.
All right. I move to amend the motion that I previously made to add, two, during construction, all remediate, or all materials brought in are inspected for invasive species of plants and animals. And that remediation is done with local pollinator-friendly seeds. All right?
Second for the amendment?
I can second that.
All right, great. So let's vote on including that.
Sorry, I don't mean that, but for the, even if it's just a nod from the applicant, if that's a concern, what we just added in there, because he wouldn't have had a chance to, no concern on the.
Sure.
They should, they're, no.
I saw that.
Seems for the record, they seem that they're okay with it.
Yeah, okay. Two thumbs up.
All right.
Good job, Counselor Remi. All right, let's vote on including that amendment, those amended conditions in the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is updated with the additional conditions. All right, let's. Mayor Khan?
Two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
And one I'd like to address to the applicants.
Sure. We're still good for that.
And it, I'm curious where you are with the approvals of the other communities.
So the other permit approvals?
Swansea and.
And Troy.
So we received approval for a special exception for work in the floodplain in Swansea last week at their zoning board of adjustment meeting. We are scheduled to attend a public meeting of the Troy Planning Board in August. An application has been submitted to them.
Does that mean that from the town of Swansea, there's final approval?
Yes.
Second thought here is, Keene State is in the city of Keene. And I think that consultation is important. When is the timing, what is the timing of your project? Do you have a sense when you'd like to, assuming everything goes in a straight-line direction?
Yeah, so we're going to start some of the structures in October of this year. And then that will finish up probably by the, around by the end of the year. And then we're going to, once we get our wetland permits early next year, we're going to start into the rest of the project. And we will be finished probably around 2027. And again, some of that is the time of year restrictions we have with the wildlife. We're not allowed to work continuously. We have to work, stop, work, stop for the wildlife. So some of the work in Keene will be done this fall and the remaining will be done pretty much in 2026.
So I don't have wording, and I don't know if this is worthy of an additional clause to our motion. But I think the scope of work could have an impact on the college and because of their use of that, there was fields that you're in the scope of your work. So I am curious between staff and chairman here. Is there a basis for us to want to include that the schedule and scope of work be shared? That we get some kind of acknowledgement from the college to that?
Counselor Remi?
I believe the applicant stated earlier that they have been partnering with the college already to make sure they're mitigating any impacts to that access over there.
I heard that.
But I just, I don't know how much further we can go beyond that because it is a property, I mean, they're working with them on access to their driveway. But if the lines aren't coming down, I don't know why it would access, affect the access to their driveway too much, except besides having trucks in their lot, but.
I think as they noted, there are cross-country paths along that way. There's a parking lot that could be impacted because of its proximity to the lines. I just. I don't think that it's an onerous thing to suggest that they share your scope of work and schedule with the college and that the college provide to the city staff some acknowledgement of receipt of that information without objection.
Ms. Fortson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll let Ms. Brenner correct me if she feels like my interpretation or my opinion is potentially not correct. But I don't know if any of the current board members have seen these, but a few years ago, around, say, like 2021, 2022, we saw a slew of these surface water protection applications for different transmission lines around Keene where they were doing work replacing wires and replacing the poles similarly to what they're doing now. And it's typically not standard practice that we would facilitate that type of communication between a property owner and another property owner who's doing work. I know Eversource is not really, the state, I believe, is the property owner and that there are easements in place. But I don't know that it's really the role of the planning board to try to facilitate communication between two different parties. I think that maybe you can make it a recommendation that's discussed as it's being now. But I don't know that it's appropriate to make it an official condition of approval in the motion for the application.
Counselor Remi?
Thank you. I tend to agree because I don't, we would be singling out that one user. And when, why aren't we asking that every property owner along the line get that same acknowledgement and that same voice as that other user? I think it's, yes, you guys are already doing the communications with them and making sure you're staying on the same page. But I think that's as far as I feel is appropriate to push it with them because I don't want to single out that one user. While it is a very large impact based on the footprint of this, like as far as large, it's like their number one butter to the prop project. But yeah, I don't feel comfortable adding a condition personally, but it's a vote.
Ms. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to think back to these, the previous applications that this board has reviewed. I want to say the closest thing that I can think of is when there was an impact to Old Gilson Road, which basically functions as a trail, it's a classics road that's very popular. And I know that in that instance, the city of Keene worked very closely with Eversource to understand the schedule and communicate that to the public. So maybe a potential motion could be to recommend clear communication with the city. And then the city can just, if we feel like it's necessary or would be helpful, we can put out a communication to the public in general, which is what we did in that instance, which would include Keene State College. But it wouldn't be. I know, and thinking back to this previous application, it was really with respect to potential trail users and then alerting them when the trail wouldn't be open or safe for them to walk on it. But if there's going to be any impacts like that this time, we could, we could always work with Eversource.
Yeah, I tend to agree with staff and Counselor Remi because to me, it's comparable to the one we just recently saw, which was for the Island Street construction using a parcel of land for storage of materials where kayakers would normally walk through. And we're not, we didn't make that a condition. We just asked them to be mindful of it and put up some signs if possible. But I'm, if you would like to move to add it as a condition.
And the condition would be to share with the butters in the community the proposed schedule?
It's your motion, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I would move that we add an additional condition, that the schedule of work be shared through public announcements and communication to the butters.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it. I go to a vote.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I just had a quick question. What Mary was describing was that there would be communication to the city and the city would communicate to the general public. And what you're moving is that the applicant will communicate to the butters? Is that what you're intending?
The way I heard you phrase it when I seconded it, you left it open to say that the communication would occur. You didn't specify how that was done, which would leave it open to the applicant to communicate to the city. And the city could do that if the city was open to it, or the applicant could do it directly if necessary. That's how I heard your motion. Is that okay?
I concur with that intent.
Okay. Leaving flexibility in how that occurs.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So let's call the vote. All those in favor of the amended condition? Opposed? Motion fails. So let's return to the motion we have on the table. Any further discussion? Sorry. All right, let's call the vote. All those in favor of approval for PB 2025-14? Any opposed? Okay. All right, that's final approval, as I understand it. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to assume that everyone else here is interested or would like to comment regarding the PB 2024-20 earth excavation permit. So given that there's quite a few people, I want to, want to let you know that, as I had stated earlier in my opening, all comments and questions will be directed through the chair. I will, when we get to the public comment portion, I will start by inviting Director Butters to speak first, followed by residents of Keene or Sullivan, then other interested parties. Can I just see a quick show of hands of how many people want to comment on this? Okay, all right. So given the high number of people, I am going to implement a three-minute time limit to give everyone a chance to speak. After everyone has got a chance to speak for a first time, I will allow folks to come up a second time. To be respectful of everyone's time, I request that individuals only speak a second time if they have new information or comments to share. So we're going to actually be using a timekeeper this evening, which I will keep track of. They will hold up a yellow card when 30 seconds remain. And at the end of their time, at the end of your three minutes, they will hold up a red card. And I will ask you to finish your thought and give way to the next speaker. So, okay. We were considering a recess at a certain point, but I think, I think we're, we went through the rest of the agenda pretty quickly, so I think we're going to plow straight through. So, okay. Hopefully, everyone understood that. So our next public hearing is PB-2024-20. So, uh, our next public hearing is PB-2024-20, Earth Excavation Permit, Major Amendment, and Hillside Protection Conditional Use Permit, Gravel Pit 21 and 57 Route 9. Applicant Granite Engineering LLC, on behalf of Owner G2 Holdings LLC, proposes to expand the existing gravel pit located at 21 and 57 Route 9. Tax map plat numbers 215-007-000 and 215-008-000. The hillside protections conditional use permit is requested for impacts to steep slopes. Waivers are requested from sections 25.3.1.D., 25.3.3., 25.3.6., and 25.3.13 of the Land Development Code related to the 250-foot surface water resource sectback, excavation below the water table, toxic or acid-forming materials, and the five-acre excavation area maximum. The parcels are combined, are on a combined approximately 109.1-acre, uh, sized lot and are located in the rural district. Okay. So, I think since... This is actually a continued public hearing, right? It was, we don't need to address completeness? Okay. So, um, so at this time, I would like to invite the applicant.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Ariane Ice with Ice Legal. I represent G2 Holdings. It's a little surprise to hear all the instructions about how the hearing is going to go forward. It's the staff's recommendation that this hearing is continued. I can talk a little bit about why. It was my understanding, the, the board has been briefed why as well. We had requests submitted, our own requests for continuance, um, maybe for the benefit of everybody. The code here in Keene has, um, requirements if you're submitting for an earth excavation permit. And that is that the applicant must, at their expense, pay for third-party reviewers to assist the staff and the board in reviewing the application. That process has been going on. Uh, we were here a couple of months ago. We fully expected to be ready. The applicant is anxious to get this completed application with all the information you need, all the information staff needs to make their recommendations, because that's the goal. And unfortunately, um, we, in our mind, it was kind of the 11th hour. It was in the last month. The third-party reviewer, Fieldstone, um, has requested that certain elements of the application were not in his purview. And he wanted a, if you will, a different, um, uh, different type of third-party reviewer to be brought on board, um, a hydrogeologist. And so, uh, that started the process. I think it actually went really quickly. The goal was to try to get everything done and all the reports and to the staff so they could review them and back to our team's engineers. And they got actually a company on board. It took a few different companies, Sandborne Head, and they got out last week, um, but they just can't get it done. They went to the site, um, the applicant's been, you know, I think extremely responsive to everything that's happening. The staff have been responsive, um, but there's still more information. So you bring in a new reviewer, so there's teams of people. Applicants paid, I think now over, close to over $20,000 for these reviewers to help all of you and to help the staff get to the nitty-gritty of the very technical elements of this application. But they came back with questions, ideas, try this, try that, um, you know, I want to see more data. That was just last week. And so, you know, we still were holding out hope, uh, last week that this could go forward. I think it was late Wednesday, maybe. The discussion was, it's not happening. Staff said, you know, we still need time. We need to get what you need, what Sandborne asked for, then we need to review it. And so they're recommending a continuance. I'm here. The team is not here with me. And we were asking for that continuance because the goal is that the staff needs to be able to make your recommendation on this application so you can deliberate on that. And they're not ready to do that. Let me see what else. We would ask that, you know, the continuance is granted. This doesn't go piecemeal. We're not taking, um, testimony from members of the public and possibly others at Butters. I'm not sure who's here. The applicant is not here. Their application, I mean, their engineers are not here. We're still resubmitting things. One of those waivers has now been withdrawn based on feedback from your reviewers. They're going to be tweaking the application to address that issue. So we're just not ready. And we'd ask that, you know, comments and testimony, we're not here to rebut it. And I think it's premature because we don't know exactly, uh, whatever issues might be raised, might be being erased. The engineers' reports aren't final. They're still in process of asking questions. I don't know if I said, Sandborne Head is a hydrogeologist. So they're looking at some of the water issues, the acid mine drainage issues. So some of the important issues that are coming up that I think you'll want the benefit of them, the staff, so we can go for this hopefully next month is the goal.
Yeah, Ms. Ice, yeah, I, thank you for being here. We're very empathetic of your position here. I know it's, uh, an additional cost and it has extended the timeline for the project, but we're just trying to get it correct.
Yes, we understand that.
With the right information. Uh, the reason, uh, that we're going to go ahead with a public hearing and allow, uh, the public to provide their comments, uh, tonight is because this meeting was noticed, um, prior to, uh, prior to it, uh, becoming evident that a continuance was going to be requested by you.
I, I can't tell you how unfair that is to the applicant. They're not ready. And, and it's the staff requesting this. I mean, we, we weren't told this third-party reviewer had to be brought in. To sit here and hear comments that we can't rebut tonight, our engineers aren't here, we can't offer you anything, and it's testimony now, we're going to have to come in next time and try to go back and rebut, and then let everybody have their say all over again? A continuance is a continuance. And this, this application has not been pending that long. This applicant has done everything the city has asked of him, and it should be continued. It shouldn't be piecemealed. It's highly prejudicial. It's not ready to have a hearing and to deny the continuance that your own staff is recommending and we've requested with no basis is just unfair. And I, I think we need a fair process here. We've done everything the city has asked.
At the proper time this evening, the board will, uh, will consider the continuance.
But to take testimony to, to actually not continue the hearing because that's...
Well, we're taking...
Then you would be denying the request. If you said you're going to take testimony tonight, you're already decided without a board vote that you're denying the request for continuance.
I don't believe that's true. And public comment is public comment.
But at a hearing that is continued, there's nothing to comment, right?
These public hearings are not a debate between the applicant and the public.
But are you going to take a vote on the continuance? Are you going to allow them to talk first? Because there is a request...
We're going to follow our normal procedure for a public hearing, which is the public comment comes before the board deliberation. Yes.
So you're going to go forward with a hearing when we were told it would be continued? That that's the staff's request. We're not here. We don't have our team here. I mean, that seems like a gotcha. It seems like, you know, I, I'd like you to ask your staff their opinion because that's not the discussions we've had.
We have the staff's opinion in hand.
Well, can we have it for the record?
We will get to it. As I said, we, there's a normal procedure that we go through here, which is applicant gets to say their piece, public has comments, and then the board deliberates.
But the applicant has a pending request for a continuance that the staff has asked us to ask for. So you're not going to rule on that continuance request?
I didn't say that.
If you hold the hearing, it's moot. How can you rule on a continuance post having the hearing? What, what good does it do? You're going to rule after all this testimony that you're continuing it?
What good is it? It, it continues it to the next meeting, yes.
But you've already held your hearing tonight. Then you're just continuing tonight's hearing. You're not continuing, you're continuing the testimony for tonight. You're not continuing it so it's being taken up at the next hearing.
I'm not sure I understand the distinction you're making.
Seems pretty simple to me. We've made a request for a continuance by the staff's recommendation and request. Here we are continuing it, and without the board voting on that, the board's going to go forward with a hearing.
Okay. Counselor Remi?
Thank you. Just, um, as, I guess, kind of a question, um, I wouldn't think of it as prejudicial to hear what the concerns are, to give the applicant an opportunity, frankly, give you a month to respond to the things that we hear here tonight. And it would give you a month to come back with responses to all of those things which otherwise would not happen. Because if you were, it, it gives you that time to come back and respond because the expectation is if we do issue a continuance, um, and seeming like we don't have all the information that we would want, I would imagine that, like, some board members would be interested in that, some wouldn't. I don't really know the answer to that until we, uh, go to a vote. But, uh, it would give you that 30 days or however long it is, it's 20, just under, so August 25th is our next meeting, to come up with responses to all those concerns that are heard so that you have more time to prepare for it. It's how I would think about it from, like, I, I don't think it would necessarily prejudice us to hear what the concerns are and give you an opportunity to respond.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the idea that, that the comments may even be germane, that we should go back and take them, the, the application is in flux. It's changing every day. Based on the third-party reviewer's comments, it's constantly changing. That's one of the reasons it can't get done. The, the new reviewers now, you know, are recommending something, a totally different plan for certain aspects of it. So to sit here and to have them be able to air their grievances at a hearing that's been asked to be continued when the applicant isn't here, to tell us we should be able to take that back to hear their concerns? We're quite well aware of them. I mean, everyone's read the paper. They've, they've made their concerns known. I would think this board wants to tune out that noise and have it heard at the proper time. This applicant has every, has done everything the city has asked, and it seems extremely punitive to sit here tonight and say, we don't care that the staff recommended. We don't care that you're asking. We're going to let 50 people from the community come up here and, quite frankly, you know, have to air all their grievances about a project that isn't even in front of you. Elements of this application may change, and this is based on your own reviewers who are also not here tonight. They can't give any comment. Someone comes up here and makes a comment, we're all going to sit here because all the experts are not in the room. You've required this applicant to spend over $20,000 to give you all experts. So when people raise their grievances, there's somebody in the room who can answer to them, as well as our experts who are not here. So what good is airing these grievances that when not, uh, you know, perhaps there's some experts on the board? I don't know your background, but I hope because of the requirements to hire someone, they're here to give you the best advice. What good is airing these grievances or these complaints? We don't have anyone who can say to the board, that's not a concern. That's just not true. That's not where the line is. I don't have that expertise. You don't have that expertise. The staff have quite a bit of expertise, but I think they would still want to defer to their reviewer experts on that. It seems, it seems like the only purpose is punitive to the applicant and to give a forum for the public to air grievances, and that's not what a public hearing is about. If this hearing's been asked to be continued, they'll have their day when it's continued next month or the month after, when the staff has all their information. Your engineers are here, your hydrogeologists are here, our engineers are here, our hydrogeologists are here. The applicant is here, who is not even here tonight. How can anybody even combat that? So I guess my role tonight is just let everybody speak their mind. As the applicant, I don't get to share with you my thoughts on it because I don't have my expert team with me. I can't even ask the staff to rely on it because their experts aren't here. Fieldstone's not here. Sandborne Head's not here. It seems, I, I'm kind of shocked, actually. I mean, I thought this was going to be perfunctory. That's everything I was given. We're doing everything right, and to prematurely hold this is just, you know, you can say it's not prejudicial, but it's extremely prejudicial. It gets one side into this board without anybody's take who actually knows what's going on on the project from a technical standpoint, and 90% of it is technical. So, I mean, I can only say my piece.
Thank you. Questions for, uh, Ms. Ice? Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me, the hearing's going, would you like me to sit back or?
Yeah, if, yeah.
Usually at a hearing, like, the applicant stays up. Okay.
Nope.
I shall?
Nope. Yeah, this is a planning board hearing. It's, uh, we have a, a, a normal process that we go through. So I'll invite staff if they would like to provide comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mary Brenner, Senior Planner, and Megan Fortson, Planner, is with me, who has been working most closely with the applicant and the third-party consultants. So I think really the only update from the last meeting is that, as you heard from the applicant, our third-party reviewer, uh, who's the Fieldstone Land Consultants, which is an engineering and land surveying firm, in their review of the application materials, they did recommend that we hire a hydrogeologist, an independent third-party hydrogeologist, to review a couple aspects of the application, specifically because they were outside their realm of expertise. So, well, they generally have expertise with, um, with earth excavation projects and have actually permitted them in the past for other applicants. In this instance, because of the, um, the questions around the water table height as well as the potential for, um, acid or acid-forming compounds being present in the material to be excavated, um, those are areas that were outside of their realm of expertise. So on the board's behalf, as, uh, required under your regulations, we did contract with, uh, Sandborne Head and Associates to do the hydrogeologic review. They did jump on board very quickly and have done a lot of great work, but haven't quite been able to review everything. And so we do recommend that the board continues the application to allow time for that review to conclude. In addition, we are still waiting on information related to a revised stormwater management report. So those are the two big pieces of information that we think, um, are very relevant to your review of the application, um, both for determining whether the standards have been met or in the case where a waiver is requested, whether the waiver criteria have been met. And I know that this application has stretched out over a few different, um, meetings and months now. So we did include at each board member's desk, um, mini packet that includes all of the waivers that were requested with the applicant's rationale for each waiver. There was a request to withdraw the waiver specifically for the water table height. We've asked the hydrogeologist from Sandborne Head and Associates to review and make sure that, you know, that's no longer needed, um, just to confirm. So, uh, we're waiting on that analysis as well. But it sounds likely that that waiver can be withdrawn, um, so it would go down to just three waiver requests. I think that was everything. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Clancy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, last meeting, I forgot to bring it up during the meeting, but I know we did a, a regional impact and we, um, Southwest Planning Commission and Sullivan were notified. But, uh, I was wondering if other communities were also notified. From my point of view, it seems like Roxbury, especially with water and these perennial streams, might also be included in, uh, regional impact. And I was wondering if they've been contacted, and if they haven't, why not?
Ms. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the question of regional impact was brought up, I want to say in December of last year, or maybe January of this year, one of those two months. We brought that issue to the board, uh, fairly early on in this process because we knew it was likely going to be a development of regional impact. And at the time, the board voted on that, and it was determined that the town of Sullivan, um, should be given a butter status due to the fact that it was proposed to be expanded into the town of Sullivan. So the Southwest Region Planning Commission and the town of Sullivan have been given, um, a butter status, which is, um, important for this type of application because they get more standing for appeal. So those are the entities that have been given a butter status. The town of Roxbury was not included in that. If you were to revise your determination of regional impact at this point, I think that would require additional notice and, um, a notification to those additional towns.
Is there some definitive way to determine? Is there some definitive way to determine if Roxbury is impacted?
There is really basic guidance in the state statutes, but really, it's up to the board to decide. And you, you know, you act as a body, so it would require a majority vote of the board to decide if there's other towns that require a butter status. I do, just from the staff's perspective, I think this question has already been considered by this board, and it's, I think this initially came to you in February or March, so you've had quite a bit of time. So it does seem like this application has gotten a lot of publicity in the news, and I'm sure that other towns are aware, even if they weren't given, you know, an official notice. It's just my thoughts, though.
Counselor Remi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand where you're coming from. I do think that Ms. Brenner's comments are good, though, and probably on point on that of, like, at this point, to try to tack that on is so late in the process, considering we've been reviewing it for six months at this point. Like, it's one that, I think that would be incredibly unfair to try to tack that on at this point, personally.
Mr. Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I agree with the feedback. I'm just, so I'm curious what, if, could Rox, because it's been getting more attention, there might have been people in those communities that didn't hear it until recently, and they might find that their town might be impacted. And I don't, I was just looking out for this board and the city in terms of making sure we're notifying the people that should be, because I don't know what the repercussions are if Roxbury thinks that they deserve this status and weren't properly notified. They might have overheard through the grapevine, but in terms of, you know, what we're, are legally responsible to do and what they might see is our responsibility as well. So that's why I asked the question.
Ms. Brenner, what would be the ease or difficulty of adding Roxbury as a butter?
So, the, the development of regional impact vote is supposed to happen before you open up the initial public hearing. So it is, I'm not sure exactly what the process is for adding a town in partway through.
That's actually what I'm asking.
Yeah. So I think that it would involve sending notice to that town. But to Mr. Clancy's question about what the repercussions would be, the only body that can decide if this is a development of regional impact, and if so, who should be notified, is this board. So if you've already taken a vote and said that it's the town of Sullivan, then that's the only town that's entitled to a butter status and notice. So that, even if another town feels like they should have been notified, they would not have any repercussion. There's no, like, yeah, there's no process for them to challenge that, really, because the board has already considered the question and voted on it and gone through the proper procedure. If you, if the board were to decide to add another town, you know, the best guess is that we just kind of put a pause on the process and notify the towns, and I would probably consult with our legal counsel just to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. But I do think it's, it's very late in the process to do that at this point.
Mr. Clancy, I'll leave it to you if you want to introduce a motion.
Just to, because Southwest Planning Commission was, does that kind of put the ball in their court, then, and kind of protect us?
So Southwest Region Planning Commission was included, and they, I believe, I'm not entirely sure what they've been doing, but it would be their role, yeah, to coordinate with some of the other towns that are impacted.
Ms. Fortson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just did want to clarify that we did speak with Southwest Region Planning Commission in the same way that we would any concern a butter, and they did state that they have been working with the smaller towns to make sure that, you know, they get any help that they need in regards to this project and guidance.
All right, that's useful. Thank you. Okay. So I assume you're, you're fine with?
Yeah, that clarifies and makes me feel comfortable.
All right. So at this time, we're going to start the public comment period. So I, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to start with direct abutters. So, yeah, please come forward, sure. And again, I think I said three minutes?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
I might need a second swat, and I actually have some information on Roxbury. Okay. Jim Manley, 67 Tyler Lane, Sullivan. I share property boundary with G2 of approximately one mile, and that's split directly on my south border and on my eastern border. Okay? Painted on the north wall of this building is a mural honoring the men who mustered after the battles of Lexington and Concord. Do you all know what I'm talking about out there in 1775? Among the men, two from Keene in the process of making their home in present day Sullivan were Ashale and Elycombe Nims. Okay? The assembled group made their way to what would be known as the Battle of Bunker Hill. They met out here on the Green, contrary to the Wyman Tavern advert. Only one would return. Running out of ammo and powder, Ashale volunteered to man the fence, as it was called, as British soldiers conducted their third and final assault on the Patriots' position. Ashale was just 26 years old, was engaged to be married, and would never return to the home he had built on the land he had cleared atop present-day Nims Hill. It's kind of interesting, all those fields at the top he had cleared. Okay? So I asked this board, is this mural meaningful, or is it just faux homage for tourists? Is Nims Hill a monument to one of our first hometown heroes who gave his life for independence, or just a hill to be exploited? I think this is important. This has not been put out there. I bought this property in 2021 to retire on. Prior to G2's proposal, this was my dream property, and had plans to build an addition, creating my dream home. That's all on hold. Thirteen years of blasting will reduce my property value during the proposed expansion and after completion. I'm not alone. Okay? There's 25-plus homes are within the 2,500-foot radius of this proposal. These people are extended abutters. They can qualify for well testing, including people in Roxbury. If I include Roxbury, the number goes up quite a bit. It is an affront that while qualifying for notification only after approval, and this is what I was told by Granite Engineering, that they are not considered as abutters. They are extended abutters in every sense of the word. Most of these 25 homes consist of retirees, I'm a recent retiree, along with several young families with children right behind me, and others.
30 seconds.
Okay? This proposal is a threat to children, pets, wildlife, and quiet enjoyment. Is this concerning that G2 does not carry liability insurance for potential damages to foundations and wells from 13 years of blasting, as evidenced by G2 operations in Gilson? All the residents in the Impact area travel Route 9 daily. The intersection of Sullivan Road and Route 9 has been identified as a dangerous intersection, and current improvement is quizzical at best. In their initial application, G2 reported no increase in Route 9 traffic.
Yeah, I'll have to ask you to finish this line.
Let me just finish this, two sentences. G2 reported no increase in Route 9 traffic. At the April 15 public hearing in Sullivan, Cody Gordon stated, and this is in the record, that there will be 60 to 75 truckloads per day. What he failed to say-
All right, I'm going to have to ask you to stop there, Mr. Manley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fine. Can I continue once everybody's finished?
Yep. Let's see where we are when everyone else gets a chance. Any other direct abutters?
Elizabeth Newcomb. I own 501 South Road in Sullivan, and I'm also a resident of Keene. I'm also a real estate agent and financial advisor, and I just wanted to share that I bought land in Sullivan to build my dream home for my family. And all of my plans are on hold due to this proposed expansion, which will certainly negatively impact my land's value. I'm very concerned that the current project has many violations that were only discovered upon review of the proposed expansion, and I'm concerned that if we haven't been doing a very good job thus far of monitoring violations and getting them remedied, what will happen if there continue to be violations and the project proceeds not in accord with the proposed plan, which is what happened originally? The project was not constructed in accordance with many elements of the approved plan. That is probably my main concern, in addition to the noise, the impact from blasting, potential hazard to my children of multiple 50-foot cliffs in my backyard. And I also am very concerned about the visual impact along the road. It's certainly, I know you're not talking about the violation tonight, but I think that it is germane to the decision, the fact that they are in noncompliance of multiple regulations and creating an unsightly view from the road. I think that's all that I had for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other direct abutters? Okay, so next we'll move to residents of Keene.
Hi, my name is Mike Perez of 419 South Road, and for what it's worth, I'd just like to express my concern about the proposal by G2. Since I am within roughly 4,000 feet of the proposed area, I did want to ask that the planning board keeps in mind verbiage in the land development code that exists to protect homeowners like myself from hazards, unsightliness, and nuisance detrimental to property values. And while I'm not a direct abutter, it's clear that I will still be negatively affected in that manner by G2's proposal for expansion. And I think that while, again, I'm a Sullivan resident, I'd like to see that the planning board considers, you know, us who live right over the border and largely contribute, you know, to the economy of Keene and come here every day, and I'd like that, you know, we'd be considered in the decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, David Jakeway, 416 South Road. My concerns are my well. I'm about an eighth of a mile from this site. My wife lives next to Brock Industries down in Massachusetts. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that area, but we have to contend with-
Can I just ask you to get a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry about that. My wife used to live next to Brocks down in Massachusetts. The whole time that the operation runs down there, that whole area is covered with dirt and findings and dust. Goes into the house and everything. For me, on the South Road, the wind blows to the east. So everybody on the other side of Route 9, including Nelson, Keene, they're all going to have this dust from the mining part of it and the crushing of rocks. That's my main concern, but my well is the one I really worry about. Being that close, blasting, they're going to be going into bedrock, and they're going to disturb the bedrock. And being less than 1.8, eight tenths of a mile from the house is going to affect my place. When we have small minor earthquakes here, I have the problem of the well getting contaminated by the, I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of it. Oh, I can't think of the name of it, sorry. But we get a lot of iron and manganese every time that happens. So I can't imagine them blasting down there, creating that problem. And also, do you have restrictions on blasting? Is there blasting allowed on the weekends? Because two months ago, they're done, they're blasting on a Saturday, and I was quite surprised. I thought there was a limitation on that. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you. Next person, please? Yeah, please.
I'm Jan Albano. I'm a Roxbury Select Woman, so rest assured, we, we know what's going on, appreciate the concern about us not being, having a butter status, but rest assured that the Select Board, the Planning Board, has been talking about this. And I would like to read a brief statement on behalf of the Roxbury Select Board. In 2022, G, excuse me, G2 began operations at the gravel pit in Keene. They now propose to expand the gravel pit in Keene and Sullivan. Although they will not be excavating on land in Roxbury, the site includes property in Roxbury and impacts not just the adjacent properties, but any property within hearing distance. G2 asked to expand because they realize they can't extract as much gravel from their existing site as previously thought. We now realize a few things, too. We reference the Fieldstone Report that cites several instances of G2 failing to fulfill the requirements of their existing permit. Some of these have now been addressed or being tended to. But would that be the case if they were not now seeking approval for their expansion? We also call your attention to G2's narrative, quote, detailing how each development standard has been addressed. In particular, item 11 is the, quote, "means to avoid and/or mitigate adverse impacts caused by dust, noise, and traffic." Their response addresses dust and traffic. There is no mention of noise. Yet noise is of a significant concern of Roxbury residents, living within earshot of the existing pit. Those people are currently subjected to constant noise that disrupts the quiet and solitude that they used to enjoy. And if the exemption is approved, they can expect more of that six days a week for the next 13 years. Other concerns that other people have talked about today include the potential for damage to foundations, contamination of wells, and the failure of retention ponds. We ask that you carefully weigh the impact of this proposed expansion on the residents of Keene, Sullivan, and Roxbury. There are multiple reasons to deny this request. What compelling reason is there to grant it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for all of us to speak. My name is Julia Sokol. I am a three-year-old resident of Sullivan, New Hampshire. I moved here from Maryland, after living in Maryland for 31 years. And I would like to bring to your attention a few points which the city of Keene itself brought to our attention in its article, "City Wants to Know What Should Keene Look Like in 2040?" And the article mentioned six key pillars that reflect what matters most to our Keene and Sullivan residents and the residents of Monadonak region community. I really appreciated that article. I was looking forward to spend the rest of my life to better the region, to bring here people, talent, and everything good we have. What I wanted to bring to your attention are a few points. Route 9 and 10 are the gateways to New Hampshire. Everybody who comes to visit our beautiful region and the state are coming through Keene. And Route 9 and 10 bring us people from Massachusetts, Vermont, New York, Connecticut, and other states. Local small-town population is declining, as I checked for the last two sentences, and for the last several decades, as last two senses confirmed, and it's due to multiple causes. The goal of us Sullivan and Keene residents, and I have a lot of friends from Keene who couldn't be here today, the goal of us, the residents and small business community, is to save our small towns from deteriorating effects of industrial-scale mining and gravel operations on Route 9, which is proposed, and Route- and Route 10, which is ongoing by G2 Holdings and Gordon Services. And the goal of our Sullivan and Keene residents is, first, to make our towns a vibrant place to live, healthy lives, and thrive as a local community. And second, to attract more residents, especially young families, to make Sullivan and Keene their forever home. And-
Thirty seconds.
And five points which I wanted to just repeat myself is that more than 31,000 residents affected, and these are from towns of Keene, Sullivan, Gilson, Surrey, Nelson, Mansville, Stoddart, Marlow, Harrisville, Roxbury, and Marlborough. It's 31,329 residents will be directly affected. Quality of life, health implications, property values, property taxes implications, and schoolchildren attendance to local schools. Thank you very much.
Who's next?
Could we speak outside of Sullivan? I'm in Gilson. Do you know how I speak?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're at that point.
Hello, thank you for having us and allowing us to speak. My name is Jennifer Schmidt. I live at 39 Old County Road in Gilson. Our property is pretty much directly across the valley from the current excavation site in Gilson off Route 10. I wake up to the sound of hammering, blasting, beeping of trucks. That goes on all day. It's Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. They begin right on the dot, and on Saturdays, they make noise until noon. We moved here three years ago, in part because of the quiet and the beauty of this area. And I don't think we could sell our property now if we wanted to with the noise that we have to endure every day. On top of that, the last time that they blasted last week, I have farm animals. I went out to water them, and my well was spewing black water. And I called to complain to my Select Board and to Cody Gordon. They did send well people, a crew out. They said it was bedrock in my well water, and they said it was probably from a thunderstorm. That was the day after the blast. In addition, my pressurization tank no longer works. It was fine the day before the blast. A day after, it's no good. I don't, we get nothing from this project. The town of Gilson gets nothing from the project. It has, I was so thrilled to be living in the Monadonak Region, and now I'm like, how can our representative, representatives have allowed this to happen to our quality of life? And so, I would like to say that I think, thinking forward to the people who may experience what we're experiencing, think hard about what you would be allowing if you were to allow this expansion to go forward. Thank you.
Hi, Keegan Brasso from Sullivan, New Hampshire. I see the five-acre rule is what they're requesting a waiver to. I don't understand fully the details, but after reading that rule, it seems like that specifically would prevent them from expanding. It protects nature, wildlife, people's ability to access and enjoy nature. And I realize this board cares, cares very much about those things after hearing you speak to previous items on the agenda. G2 Holdings is requesting waivers to all these regulations that just, it sounds awful. I care about the dust. I care about the noise. But specifically, the five-acre rule seems to prohibit expansion. Let that rule stand. Let it protect all of those things. The water, the wildlife, the trees, the ability for the land to be used for other purposes in the future. Thank you. Sorry, I'm very passionate about this.
Hello there. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Peter Vogel of Sullivan. I don't have the, as much information on this as some of the other folks who have spoken here. But what I do know that doesn't seem to be in question is greatly concerning to me. Thirteen years of blasting is not in question. Thirteen years of dust and disruption to wildlife is not in question. Thirteen years of disruption of quality of life for the residents, not just abutting the property, but in the entire area, is not in question. The scar that will be left on the face of the earth in our area is not in question. And as was said so eloquently earlier, I see so many problems with this project. I do not see the benefit to the community, only to the applicant. And for the rest of us, tough luck. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Amelia Perrin of 98 Apple Hill Road in Sullivan. Lived there for about a dozen years, grew up in New Hampshire. I have also worked at the Apple Hill Center for Chamber Music, where I run the summer music camp there. Been there for about 15 years. So, very interested in a lot of the issues that have been discussed tonight. To my mind, this is a project that will profit G2 Holdings and Granite Engineering, et cetera, whereas the adverse effects of this project will be borne by our local community. As such, I feel that there should be the highest possible standard set to mitigate these adverse impacts. Personally, I'm concerned about 13 years of sound pollution for our music camp, as well as our community, our neighbors, as well as air and water pollution in this rural area. In my opinion, letting this project go forward, including these waivers that have been presented tonight, would be a failure to adequately protect the water and health of our local communities. Thank you.
My name is Dwayne Adleton. I'm from 33 Level Drive, Gilson, New Hampshire. I am a butter to this, and now I have 60-foot cliffs around my property. I have a building that was split in half that they won't admit to from blasting their first two blasts. They came up last week and put a blasting sensor on my property, which needs to be set on solid surface, just like this table right here. They put a lot of 21 inches of leaves and composts. The first blasting sensors they put out, they put them on my leach field. Asked them not to put them there. They refused. The comment was, well, those are rocks and boulders there. Why would I put the sensor there? The sensor belongs on solid surface. I don't believe from the start of any of the processes they did in Gilson or anywhere else. This is what you're gonna be looking at. This is right from Route 10 in my backyard, everybody. And my property is severely damaged from these people. So, I request, and I'm gonna say to you folks here, if you allow this to continue, they have no respect. They don't respond. G2 Holdings owns the land. The blasting company destroyed my barns, my house. They won't admit to it. And they want me to use my homeowner's insurance to fix it. They're not bonded and insured. G2 should be responsible. He hired the blasters. He should pay me, and he should go after the blasters for the responsible damage to my property. And anybody else, as I have sinkholes in my neighbors, two more foundations, and our neighbor lost her birds after the second blast because they got damaged in the cages and so stressed out, she lost her exotic birds. I am representing Level Drive of Gilson, New Hampshire. And if nobody believes me, just come take a look at and come see my
Good evening. My name is Friedrich Mokel. I'm an attorney from Concord. I represent Mr. Manley. Just gonna present a couple of points for the board. Everything that you've heard tonight, they said it better than I can. I'm just gonna try and tell you what I think is some of the most important things that I heard, and your job. Everybody in this room probably knows these excavation pits are governed by a statute, RSA 155E, but you also have your own regs. And your own regs are a little bit more stringent. And I just wanna read you a couple of requirements. And these are the requirements that exist in this city, and this board cannot approve an excavation, an excavation permit if these certain facts exist. One of them, two of them, rather, when the issues of a permit would present a potential hazard to human health, safety, and welfare, or to the environment caused by adverse impacts associated with an excavation project. Examples of such hazards include adverse visual impacts. You've heard, you've heard the residents, the butters. This is what they're worried about. And if I may approach, I have a handout. Is that, is that permissible, Mr. Chairman?
Please give it to the staff.
What I've handed the planner are copies of your meeting minutes from August of 2022, when you first approved G2's application, and also the meeting minutes from the Sullivan ZBA in April 15. All right? I want to turn your attention to page 15. Page 15 is what the applicant in present day is telling Sullivan what they're gonna do. They're gonna blast this mountain down, and you're gonna get three steps of 50-foot ledges. That's, that's what they want you to approve. And I want you to think about that. You've heard the residents and the butters, but what G2 is asking you to do on this board is make your legacy an immutable scar on that gorge. Because what you don't probably know, and G2's not gonna tell you, is they don't have to reclaim ledges and steep slopes. So, when they blast it, there it stays forever. This, most mining pits, it's a hole in the ground. You do some blasting. You throw some loam over it. You grow some grass, and it's okay. But not ledge, not mountains, because you can't, can't cover a ledge with loam and plant grass. It doesn't work that way. I got 30 seconds. So, I want you to take a look at your, I'll call it your land development code, section 25.2 C and E. That's health, safety, welfare, visual impacts. Same thing is true on LDC 25.2D. That's the noise. Everybody's complaining about the noise. That's a big problem. That gorge, 25.2F, they're gonna destroy it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Newcomb, 64 Center Street, Sullivan. I want to begin by acknowledging the concerns raised by counsel for the applicant, that public hearing and comment on this might be premature, given that it seems likely that a continuance is gonna be had in this case. But since we're here, and you noticed this meeting, and I'm missing my daughter's bedtime, I'll share a few thoughts. So, I'm from Keene, New Hampshire originally. My family is and has been for generations part of the Keene community. I lived away from Keene for a long time, including several years in the Army, all over the country, deployed overseas. For almost 10 years, my goal was to get back to Keene. In 2023, my wife and I, with our baby, moved back to this area. We didn't end up in Keene, but just down the road in Sullivan. We bought our dream house. We've got a little bit of land. We got a 209-year-old home on a Fieldstone Foundation fed by well water. And since we've been there, it's come to our attention that G2 has been expanding into our town and wants to continue to do so. And they're now requesting waivers and exceptions so that they can essentially bypass the codes that this town has. When they've demonstrated in the past that they don't really care about those codes to begin with. They've violated the plans they've submitted. They violated state law, town ordinances both here and in Sullivan. And they're asking you to trust them that if you grant a waiver, they will follow whatever conditions you place on that waiver. I would simply say, they have not given you reason to trust them in the past. I see no reason to trust them in the future.
Thank you for your service. Anyone else?
Joseph Isananzo. I'm at 501 South Road, along with Liz. As Andrew noted, G2 makes a lot of promises. However, they've had repeated violations of municipal, state, and federal regulations, many of which have not yet been remediated and may never be. They've advanced into Sullivan without seeking any approval at all. They're in arrears on a number of tax obligations. And as others have noted, it's not actually possible to return the land to a pre-impact state in many cases, especially in the case of these three 50-foot cliffs. Millions of tons of bedrock are being removed from the site, and they are suggesting that they replace at least a certain portion of this with loam on the side of an extremely steep hill that descends into a ravine with a pretty significant, you know, river at the bottom of it, down into the Otter Brook watershed, which has the potential for ferric oxide runoff into local and Keene waterways, while flooding is becoming an increasing danger in the area and nationwide, as we know. Now, this gravel pit with dirt, dust, trucks, mud, noise, traffic will be the defining feature of Keene for all visitors for decades to come. What's visible now is nothing compared to what's to come. We can already see the scar beginning to appear on the, on the hillside as you come into Keene. That's just the barest beginning of what it will be. In 13 years of blasting, 13 years of taking down that hillside, that will be the thing that everyone knows Keene for, is the side of the hill. And finally, can we trust them, or will this become a constant problem for the city, as it has already proven to be? Thank you.
I see you, Mr. Manley. Anyone else who would like to speak for the first time? Go ahead, if you would. Ma'am?
It's not my first time.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Manley.
I'd like, I, okay, I'd like to remind the board that you could deny this. You don't need the technical data. You have eyes, right? We were all up there earlier today. This, this is clearly visible already from Route 9. Okay? That's in direct violation of 155E and Keene's ordinances. Okay? This is just a zoom on that. You know, you noticed that Cody did not take us up to that area. There was a reason, because if we went up to that area, you'd have a clearer view of Route 9. Speaking of Route 9, you've been lied to. I'm gonna be blunt, okay? Basically, in their initial application, G2 reported no increase in Route 9 traffic. At the April 15 public hearing in Sullivan, Cody Gordon stated that there will be 60 to 75 truckloads per day. What he failed to say is that truckload consists of two trips, inbound and outbound. Okay? Resulting in 120 to 150 trips each day. By law, okay, the regulations state that a traffic study should be done. Okay? As I was starting to say earlier, the intersection of Sullivan Road and Route 9 was deemed hazardous. What the state implemented is half-assed. I'm gonna be very blunt. Okay? So, I ask you, what will be the safety impact of 100-plus trips daily to and from the expanded operation? Did you guys see the double wide, the double-load truck pull in there? I mean, it's crazy. Okay? G2 is not to be trusted. It's documented facts that they conducted forestry and excavation operations in Keene, Sullivan without permits, as well as forestry operations in Brattleboro. Okay? Again, state and Keene regulations state clearly that a gravel pit should not be visible except for the entrance to the operation. That is clearly not the case. Okay? So, I, finally, I'm gonna close with, I'd like to ask you all, how approval of this, of this proposal is gonna enhance the property values of people in the region? Okay? Or at least not negatively impact property values. Okay? For myself and 24 neighbors. Okay? So, I appreciate you guys granting the hearing in lieu of this. If I have an extra minute, I asked this question months ago. Still don't have an answer. Why did Granite Engineering draw a one-mile perimeter when your own regs state 2,500 feet? So, I superimpose that on here. Okay? There's at least 25 people, and it, and the impact to wells and all extends into Gilson. Okay? So, you don't need all this technical data. You have, you have your own eyes. You can read the regs. This is analysis that I had done earlier. It goes into all the regs. It is also related to my complaint.
Thank you, Mr. Manley.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hello again. Sorry, just one short note.
Yeah, please say your name again, because our, our note taker is remote.
Julia Sokol, Corey Mine Road, Sullivan, New Hampshire. And I am a little bit over a mile as the crow flies across the forest- And I am a little bit over a mile, as the crow flies across the forest from Route 10 Development. My house shook, and it shakes every time they blast. And I'm not even a direct abatter. However, what I wanted to say is, last week, I've heard on NPR an interesting short report about the population of New Hampshire. The only county which gained some population was Carroll County. And the reason why is that people move there for the natural beauty, for their peace and quiet and healthy environment. What developments on Route 9 will be, it will be our legacy of barren rock, unhealthy environment. And I don't want to see Keene and our small towns to be drive-through community. People driving through Keene just to get to better places. That's why I wanted you to take this to consideration. I want you to, like me, want our region to prosper, to be an attraction. Jenny and I independently moved from Maryland here three years ago, and I want this region to succeed. I spread the good words to all friends I have far and wide, and it's why I'm here, for all of us to have amazing place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick. In pertaining to blasting, and so everybody knows, when they did the major blast near us, the blast was felt from more than a mile and a half away, and we have documentation, registered letters, I'm getting notarized paper forms, that the blast had feeling so far away that Keene transmission, which is up in Sullivan from my house quite a ways, they went outside thinking there was a Chinook helicopter landing on their building, on their houses. And to go with the rest of this, that picture I showed you, the dimensions from my property where they're doing the blasting is 1,200 feet. But 1,200 feet is not the number from that picture. That's 1,200 feet is down by the driveway. They're probably 300, they're 1,100 feet directly from my house, through my woods and my neighbor's woods. And I'm on a sheer rock. I can't even put a foundation in for a house. I had to cut stone, hire machines, grind the tops, have a slab port that's 12 and 1/2 inches thick on the edges. It's an Alaskan slab. Paid $19,000 for it, and they still cracked it with their blasting. They still refuse to understand how much that building and that property shakes. They will give you numbers and readings that make no sense. If you ask for information to get it, even our town doesn't get it. We've asked for all the records. They fly drones over your property, off your property. That is not even legal. He should have never left with drones from my property to go search out from the blasting. He doesn't follow any regulations. They constantly, constantly, they never even cleaned the road. They swore my wife, because the sweeper was coming up the road the wrong way with no flagmen, and my wife, the guy got out, shook his fist, and my wife made her pass him on the wrong side of the road on her way to work, down to work in Gilson. They have no respect for anything. The dirt and gravel on the road, they wouldn't have had a sweeper if I didn't bring it up and force the town to have a meeting with them and put informal complaints about maintenance and road care. They're coming in there with tractor trailers and hauling out the stone now. Because they can't get stone out of Keene, they actually said to me, well, we're taking more out of Gilson because we got a contract we have to fill. So because they can't get the stone from Keene, they just use excuses to get stone from somewhere else. And they're just overtaking and overblasting. So just keep it in mind, please.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Just a couple of final thoughts. The original plans showed many instances of inaccuracy and misrepresentation, as highlighted in the Fieldstone report. And at the meeting in Sullivan, the folks from G2 consistently downplayed the negative impacts that we would face from the operation and continue to need many waivers to regulations that exist for a reason, just to be able to proceed with the operation. I would just encourage you to remember that these regulations are here for a reason, to protect us, the people, the residents, the community, and the wildlife. If you need so many exceptions to the rules just to be able to operate, I think that perhaps this isn't the correct location for this sort of operation, and certainly not the expansion of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I think we've heard quite a bit, and I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting at this point.
Excuse me, does the applicant get to speak?
I'm sorry?
Does the applicant get to speak? I only spoke to the continuants. You didn't even have the applicant make their presentation. I'd like to at least make a rebuttal here.
Yeah, please. I'll allow that.
But we're going to go with a three-minute time limit.
I'm the applicant.
I understand.
That's for the public. You're going to give me...
It's not a debate, Ms. Ice.
Okay. Well, I will say then I think this was one of the most egregious examples of lack of due process I've ever seen. As predicted, it was just a litany of complaints. I'd say 99% of them, we vehemently reject the contention. They're raising things like the complaint that hasn't even been found to be a violation. The whole notion that we didn't even make our application, that's not the process here. The applicant presents. The staff can give you their comments, and then the public can speak to that application. I only spoke to the continuants, and then you asked me to leave the table, and you let everybody else air their grievances. I think this entire night should be stricken from the record. It was based on nothing. There was no application brought to you. We will present our case in August. We will address the legitimate concerns the staff and their engineers have, which we've been doing repeatedly, to put an application in front of you. I asked that you give this applicant the same due process you would give every applicant in front of you. And I haven't seen that tonight, and we've worked hard to provide what we need. And I guess that's it for my three minutes.
Thank you.
And also, will you be ruling on the extension or the continuance? How is that going to work?
We will be, as soon as I close the public hearing, we will go to deliberation. All right. I'll give you another chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I briefly want to respond to this matter of this motion to continue that I understand was filed on Wednesday. I didn't see a procedure in the board's policy with respect to motions, but this is what I'm seeing happening here, is that the applicant filed an 11th-hour motion to continue, and then the applicant, who bears the burden, made the election not to show up to this public hearing. The applicant's attorney is here, sure. But you've heard, engineers, these are people that the applicant should expect to have ready and answer questions on maybe not the hydrology portion, but at least the portions that are properly before the board tonight, and that the applicant itself, its members, its managers aren't here. That's not this board's trouble. That's not the public's trouble. That's the applicant's trouble. It's their burden to be ready to go. And I think it's dangerous to make these arguments that it's prejudicial to the applicant for this board to proceed when there was no decision on that motion to continue. And so I don't think there's any procedural irregularity here, except maybe for the hydrology component. That's what I understand, is the last bit, maybe staff can come in. But as far as the proper nature of tonight's hearing, it doesn't need to be stricken. And if the applicant wants to, if, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what the board's intentions are. But if this hearing is continued to August, maybe we hear about hydrology. Maybe the applicant can respond. But there's no procedural irregularity that I see. And, you know, at this point, I think the motion to continue is moot on that score, but I wouldn't be concerned about some of the arguments that the applicant's attorney made to you, okay?
Thanks for your advice on that. All right. Now I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. And we will, at this time, entertain a motion. Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to continue the public hearing for PB 2024-20, to the planning board meeting scheduled for August 25, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the City Hall, second floor, council chambers.
May I ask for a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Fazani. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you, just for the sake of seconding what the staff has presented, there's some information yet to be brought to us, and you'll, we'll receive that in the next month. I think the continuation is an appropriate action.
Thank you. And from my perspective, the public input is important to us, but not necessarily have the same weight as professional engineers and analysis from licensed professionals in this field of hydrogeology. But we do appreciate it, and I appreciate everyone's patience and civility throughout this. Thank you. So for that, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of PB 2024-20 continuance to the August meeting? Any opposed? Public hearing is continued to August. Thanks, everyone. We still have some items on our agenda, so if you guys wouldn't mind exiting the chamber, we can continue with our agenda. Yeah. If you wouldn't mind taking your conversation outside, we'll continue with our meeting agenda. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody need water?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Let's get bigger cups next time.
Get this man a drink.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We lost two. Okay. Mr. Clunett, thank you for your timekeeping. That was a wrong point. Except I could barely see you.
I know. I was like leaning back.
Yeah, I have an obstructed view here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the other door opens, it's not for good.
Yeah, it's fine. I just tried to get them open, but I was like, I was chasing them downstairs. I'm like, yes, it's fine. Well, I mean, it's a whole funnel up down.
All right. Let's move on. Next item on the agenda is a master plan update. Ms. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Master Plan Steering Committee meeting in July was rescheduled to August. And so I believe it's August 12 is the next meeting.
Is it 12 or...?
Yeah, it's the second Tuesday of the month. And so the consultants right now are working on a revised draft of the master plan that will be sent out to the committee members. Most of the edits at this point are fairly, like, they're not changing significant things about the master plan at this point. It's more like reorganization and some formatting things, and a couple of little tweaks here and there. I think the biggest change that we've asked them to make is with respect to the implementation section, to make it a little bit more user-friendly. So no major changes coming out from the draft that's currently posted, but we do expect some changes. And then hopefully, that will be ready to go for the next Master Plan Steering Committee meeting to get the adoption process started. And we expect if the Master Plan Steering Committee is ready, that they would send it back to you, because they are a body of this board. And then we would ask you to refer it to City Council for them to endorse. And then following that, we would ask you to hold a public hearing and then formally adopt the master plan. So with that schedule, it could be September when this board adopts the master plan. If there's any delays from that timeline that I just articulated, then it could be pushed off to October. But we're hopeful for early fall to get this adopted. And with that, I would just say that there's lots of information up on the portal, the keenmasterplan.com portal. And then finally, there is a display downstairs in the City Hall lobby, if you've had a chance to take a look at it. I guess the city clerks has been asking different departments to put up a display. The airport was up for a few months, and then they asked community development. And so we thought it would be kind of interesting to take a look back at the last 100 years or so of community planning, because the city's first zoning map was from 1925. And so we kind of did a little display called "A Century of Community Planning", and then we also put some information about the master plan, and we're doing like a little time capsule. So feel free to check that out on your way out tonight. But that's just kind of a fun thing that we're doing. It's not really part of the official project.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. And contrary to popular understanding, the mayor and I were not part of that 1925 effort. I did want to ask a question, though. You said that we will send it to the City Council and then adopt it formally?
That is correct. So in the past, while the planning board is the body that has the authority to adopt the master plan, it has been this board's practice, and it is actually written into your rules of procedure, that you ask City Council to also endorse the plan, because implementation of the plan really falls to City Council. So that's just been the city's practice. And so we just recommend that you follow that this time as well.
So we will wait for their endorsement?
Yes.
And then approve? Okay.
That's what we're recommending. That's what happened with the last master plan effort as well. And the way it worked is City Council basically passed a resolution endorsing the master plan. And then that resolution is included at the front of the master plan, along with their certificate of adoption from the planning board. So it shows buy-in from both the planning board, but also the governing and legislative body of the city.
Thank you for that clarification. I was thinking it was the other way around. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Questions for staff on master plan?
Yeah. Maybe I just missed something that I should have tuned into. Is the current, is there a current, is there a final draft with all changes? Because I've made a copy and then saw a message from you that there are still changes being made, so...
Yeah. So there is a, currently, there is a draft online that is substantially what we expect the final draft to look like. There are going to be some changes to it that the consultant is working on right now. But again, it's mostly a few tweaks here and there, and then some kind of rearranging of content, mostly around the implementation section. So there is a final draft coming out shortly that we will send out to the Master Plan Steering Committee members as soon as we have it in hand, at least a week before the August 12 meeting, for you all to review. But it shouldn't have any major changes from what you see today.
And I know I've been in communication with both planning staff and the chairman. I regret I will not be at the August 12 meeting. It is council break period. I would have personally wanted that to be rescheduled...
Ms. Brenner, will the subsequent copies of the draft be redlined, or we'll have to dig in and find where the changes are made in the 100 and some odd pages?
So they won't be redlined, but we can send out a summary of what has changed and point you to the pages.
Perfect.
Just so that it's a little bit easier.
Thank you.
And I also want to let, to the mayor's comment, I, I'm also very sorry that the timeline worked out the way it did, because I think, I know the input from everyone on the master plan steering committee, but I also want to especially recognize the mayor and Chair Farrington for all of the very thoughtful and in-depth input that you've had throughout the whole process. And so I just want to recognize that, and, you know, it's, I'm also a little bit sad that it didn't work out for this. But I'm also aware you're on the planning board, so you will have a chance at the planning board public hearing, hopefully. And I also hope that when we send out the draft to you, you can always send us comments via writing, and we will share those at the committee meeting. And the same thing goes for planning board members. The draft is posted online, both on the city's website and at keenmasterplan.com. So if you do happen to take a look at it, and you have any comments or questions, feel free to reach out to staff.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. All right, let's keep moving on to staff updates. I see you have two items listed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first one is something you should all be fairly familiar with, which is the overview of administrative and minor project approvals issued from January 1st through June 30th. In the past, we've done annual updates, and per previous conversation with this board, we're starting to do bi-annual updates, just so that you're kept a little bit more in the loop with those approvals that are being issued. As you'll notice, there's, they're pretty much all administrative approvals. The Minor Project Review Committee sees very little business because of a few issues, but the main one being that most projects don't qualify for minor project review due to either having some sort of piece to it, or a waiver request, or something that requires planning board, or if the city is a direct abutter, or holds an easement or something on the subject property. So what we're finding with the Minor Project Review Committee is that a lot of the applicants that would qualify for minor project, or minor site plan review, end up getting bumped up to the planning board for those reasons. So we continue to see very little business with that board, and I think that's part of the site plan review threshold conversation that we're planning to have with you in the future. And that also reminds me, I've received a number of comments from board members, so I just want to thank you all and let you know that we are working on the site plan review thresholds, and we'll bring that back to you in a couple of months.
Thank you. I apologize, I may have missed exactly what you were saying, but you said there were no minor project reviews for the first six months?
Nope, none. And we've only seen a, maybe like two, three per year, maybe four?
Thank you. Just wanted to be sure I understood. And you have a second item?
Yeah, so the second item is really just sharing a correspondence with you regarding a waiver that the city requested for the Transportation Heritage Trail project. So I would just recommend, if you have any questions about that, to reach out to the city engineer, Brian Ruoff, who the letter is addressed to. I mostly included this in your packet because the planning board was copied on the letter. So it's really just for your information to keep you in the loop. So I guess the long and short is that I don't really have any information to share with you about this item, other than to direct you to, any questions to public works staff.
That was not in our packet today, though, right?
It is. It's the page 83. It's just a letter from...
How did I miss that? Okay. Yeah, all right, I see it. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other staff updates? Great. Any new business that board members would like to introduce at this time? Good. So I'll move along to the, first, before we do it, I'm going to say we do not have more time this evening. In case anyone was wondering.
I was hoping for a longer party, but...
Yeah. So upcoming dates of interest, the Joint Committee of the Planning Board and PLD, September 8th, 6:30 PM. Planning Board Steering Committee, August 12th at 12 noon. That's a team's call. Planning Board Site Visit, August 20th, 8 AM, to be confirmed, and the time as well is somewhat negotiable. And then finally, Planning Board Next Meeting, regular meeting, August 25th, 6:30 PM in these chambers. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:17. Thanks, everyone.